So, welcome you to the Town of Bablin Planning Board. We do have one public hearing, so we're going to begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pat Halpin. Jerry O'Neil. Dan Truchan.
President.
Ed Nguyen.
President.
Juan Leon.
Present.
James Pacaro.
Present.
Greg Gaxiola. Matt Esposito. Nunezio Russo. Rich Casey.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let me read this statement into the record prior to the public hearing. The Planning Board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the Planning Board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void.
Item A on the agenda: Public Hearing Site Plan Review. Job number 22-52A, Bobby Lau. Location, I'm sorry, proposes to construct a 15,927-square-foot, single-story retail center with partial second-floor storage over one unit, as well as proposed parking lot and associated site improvements.
Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant? Sir. Okay, Mr. ...
Jerry O'Neil.
Your request is held, thank you. We'll see you after this. Thanks, Jerry. Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Harold Gebhardt, Architect, 363 North Melbourne Avenue.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
I'm here with Mr. Lau.
Okay.
Tommy Lau. And what we'd like to do is construct a kind of sort of a single-family, single-story structure on the corner of, I guess, Albany and ...
Before you get into the description of the project, the Planning Commissioner released a memo regarding this application dated August 10th. Have you had the opportunity to review this?
I think I have, so, yes.
With your client? Are there any issues, any concerns, anything that you would like to bring to the board's attention related to this memorandum?
I don't believe so, no.
So, your client has no objections to any of the conditions? Or any of the covenants and restrictions, is that correct?
No, sir.
What do you mean, "no, sir"?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
"No, sir," that's correct.
All right, thank you. So, that is correct. Okay, please proceed, Mr. Gebhardt.
What I did provide to the board members is my little presentation.
Matt, do we have this to put up on the screen? Good. Okay.
It shows my design for the building portion that faces north. North and west. That's what we're supposed to construct. The second portion, which I don't think you have there, shows the actual site plan itself of the 15,000-square-foot building. Parcel, a part of it is going to be the laundromat with about 2,000 square foot of second level for storage. We can't do a basement because the water level's too high. And then we got one, two, three stores, about 1,000 square feet, and maybe a donut shop. And that's kind of sort of it.
That's it?
That's it.
Are you seeking any changes in covenants and restrictions? Or any of the, I know this is regarding covenants and restrictions. But are you seeking any relief from the zoning board?
No.
So, you meet all the parking requirements?
We're borderline one car. Borderline one car. Two, three weeks ago, I reduced the size of the building to eliminate the parking barriers. Can you pull the site plan back up?
Matt?
If you look at the upper corner of the site, the town wants me to reduce, to eliminate, that one parking space that I'm calling land banked.
Matt, is that where you have the cursor now? No, where is, where is it? What is it?
There it is, right there.
Oh, up there, okay, thank you.
I would like to leave that there. If I left that there, I do not need a parking barriers. If the town makes me eliminate that, then I have to make the building a little smaller again.
Okay. All right. So, this is for unspecified retail, is that correct? Except for the laundromat?
One of the buildings immediately to the, to the south of the laundromat, we're thinking of a Chinese restaurant. Every commercial center needs a Chinese restaurant, and maybe a pizza place. And they were thinking maybe of the building on the corner as being like a donut shop. We don't have tenants. We don't have tenants for that, right? Tommy?
No, no tenants. I know some of the residents are concerned about loitering. They're concerned about loitering, what goes on sometimes during the day, and what may be going on when the, when the, when the retail is closed. Are there going to be any restricted hours regarding the operation of these retail establishments?
Probably a timeframe, yes. There will be lights. There will be lights. And what I've done on other occasions is put a sprinkler system in the back of the building that deters people loitering. I don't know if that works or not, but that's what I've done before.
So, the, does the application, or the application does not include the possibility of a restaurant? Is that correct?
Not at this time, no.
What does that mean, "not at this time"? What about later?
Well, it doesn't, it does not include a restaurant. However, if we do get a restaurant, then we'd have to come back to this board. Yes? Yes.
Do any of the other board members have any questions?
I do.
Juan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you describe to the board some of the entries and exits on this site plan?
If you, if you look at the site plan, which is right behind you, the main entry to the laundromat is where the, where the little cursor is. That's your main entry. You can enter also on, also to the east, west, and also to the east on, into the laundromat. Each individual store has the main entry off of the west side.
Are there any other questions, Dan?
You can see that on the floor plans.
Yeah.
Mr. Gebhardt, you, you mentioned lighting, but what about a security system? Do you have a security system, lighting, set up throughout the?
Absolutely.
You do?
It will, yeah, it will be set up, yes.
Okay.
Lights will come on at a certain time and go off at a certain time if the board deems that. If the board wants 24 hours lighting, we'll provide them.
Dan?
Where are the utilities for the entire property going to be located? I see utilities room for the laundromat, but I don't see one for the rest of it.
The utilities for the laundromat basically are on the second level. The utilities for each individual stores are miniscule. They can be put anyplace.
So, are there, if they use gas, are they going to have the, where is the gas piping going to be, emitters?
In the back of the building.
Okay.
We'll put the gas meters. Jimmy? Anyone else?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gebhardt, do you know the hours of operation for the laundromat?
I will, I will in a minute. What are the hours?
Seven to 12.
Seven in the morning to 12 at night. Probably seven days a week.
Would the applicant agree to condition on closing time?
Tommy. I'm working on that.
Okay, hold on. Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Tommy Lau, 29 Reddington Street, Bay Shore, New York, 107.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't know who's calling me, but, no, and I was in an important meeting. Sir?
Yep.
Please proceed.
What was the?
So, the question is, would you be willing, the neighbors are concerned that this is going to be going on all night? Right?
Right.
They're, they obviously want lighting, they want the security, all of that. But the big concern is from 7:00 AM to midnight that there could be people loitering around and creating other issues not related to getting their clothes clean.
But it's in also in our best interest as well to maintain a safe property. So, we always have brightly lit properties, very clean, very secure. We have, this is our dozen store, so we know how to do this.
You have other stores?
Yeah.
Where are they?
All over Islip. Bay Shore, Islip. We have a website if you like to look.
Sure.
We have one other proposal on 109 from Mr. Lau.
All right, all right, we'll just talk about this application. But I would be very interested, I know if I was living nearby.
Sure.
What, how the operations are at the other properties that you have, you know, throughout the area. Okay. So, it would be good. But that's on your website?
Yeah. Laundrydepot.co.
Laundry, how many, how many?
There's eight there.
How many laundromats do you have?
We operate eight.
Eight?
It's on Long Island.
Okay.
What are the hours of those locations?
They vary. Most of them are 24 hours in Islip. We have few that are seven to 12, or something like that. Yeah, seven to 12.
Dan?
At your facilities, I noticed two things. One, is there going to be a fluff and fold option for people to drop off?
Yes, sir.
Are there separate hours for that, for people to pick up? Or is that also whatever hours you're operating, they'll be able to pick up and drop off?
Normally, we don't restrict that. It's business hours.
Also, I noticed on the plan that you have a playroom here. What do you normally put in that location?
Reading books, like a little library for children, and a place for families to do their homework.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board at this time? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to bring to our attention regarding this application?
I'm fine at the moment, sir.
All right, let's hear from the public. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the board regarding this application? Please come up.
Thank you. I think there's a couple of us that would like to address the board.
That's fine. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Sandy Brewster Walker, 83 Madison Avenue, Amityville.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
My concern is about the historic preservation of the property. The property is historically significant, both locally, regionally, and statewide. There are two colored schools that were on that property. The whole, if you go back to the first slide you had up there of the property.
Matt, can you do that?
All of that property and some of it, I guess, right above it, was 20 acres that James Squires owned. And he actually turned it, in 1841, he turned it over to Daniel Squires. And some of his descendants are here with us. And it's also, I'm a descendant. And about that time, it was Huntington.
Right.
And Huntington, after the people in North Amityville, this is a historic district. Mary Castone, your, your own town historian, has given me all kinds of deeds and stuff that we have put together over the years about this property. One school was directly on Albany Avenue, on the property as it exists today. And the other one was further, that's north, up on the slide. Also, the house that sits on the property has a date on it, I think in the records of 1927 or something like that. But someone had looked at it, and it goes back to the 1700s. 1927 is around the time that you started having building permits and stuff like that, and that was put on a lot of properties. But one of the owners of the property, Daniel Squires, he was actually married to our leadership of the Montauk Indian Nation, of which I'm the executive director and government affairs officer. So, before you build a laundromat, or even a restaurant, or anything else, you really have to take a look, or I suggest you take a look at the property, or have a real archaeologist come in and look at the property. Because we, that whole area, we were here before the first settlers got here in the 1600s. And that property also bordered on what in the deeds, it called it a brook. Today, it goes underground or it's dried up. But it was actually a brook that they used to go down to what is now Avon Lake and go out into the South, Great South Bank. So, that's a very historical property. And I know Mary and I have been working, like I said, on pulling information together to get it historically designated. In fact, we've also been working for the last 10, 15 years to try to get that whole section. So, what you'll be doing by putting in a laundromat, or a restaurant, or whatever you put in, you'll be erasing us from the history books. And we don't need to be erased any further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the board regarding this application?
Good evening.
Did you give the, oh, okay. You don't have to fill that out now, you can do it after you speak.
Sure.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Marguerite Smith, and my property is?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I've got to swear you in and do it.
I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I have the right hand.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name and address again?
Marguerite Smith, my property's at 16 Divine Place. So that when I walk out of the door in the morning to get the mail, get to my car, I'm going to see this development. Now, I married into this community 40 years ago, nearly 40 years ago. And I was fascinated by the quiet cul-de-sac on which I lived. I'm a country girl by, I'm from the East End, although I've lived in the city as well. And I was very fascinated that this was, I had known Amityville over the years. But I was truly fascinated.
Where's your house?
16 Divine.
Matt, could you point to the house, 16 Divine? Is that it right there? Hold on, we'll search.
Is that my house?
No, we'll find it for you. Matt, where is that?
Come show me my house.
16 Divine, there you go.
Just 16 Divine, okay?
All right, there we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So, when I walk out of the door in the morning, I will turn to my left. Whereas I plan my trip, I have, you know, out in the morning, I have to know what's going on on Albany Avenue. Is it crowded? My concerns are for safety, for traffic, for aesthetics, as well as I'm supporting the historic significance, that the historic significance be known and preserved. Again, I don't know what this means for property value. I don't know if you know what the development proposed means for property value. Is it going to be a commercial venture that's going to be successful? Or is it going to be a tearing down of homes, of housing, and replacement by temporary, temporary commercial endeavors? Is it something wanted by the existing community? Or is it some, are, are these ventures wanted by others who are concerned about tax rates, about tax income through commercial development? I don't know, and I don't know if you know. What I do know is that the town seems to be ignoring the use of my street, the house right, the property right next to mine, use of that for commercial parking. Lots of complaints have been filed. Nothing seems to happen. Maybe the guy pays a, a fine now and then. I remember a few, several months ago, having to go outside and have a major battle with him about moving his truck so that my, at that time, ailing husband could safely get out of the house. So, I'm really concerned that you tell us, what is the plan here? What is the vision of community that you have here? As you think about this. I love Chinese restaurants. I love lots of restaurants. I know which are my favorites. And I look forward to exploring new ones. But I know, but I don't have to have one on my corner. Most of the housing on, if not all of the housing, on Divine Place, which, again, we got out in the morning and we turned to one, whichever side of the block we're on, we turned to one side or the other, and we see this. I don't know if it's, if there's any concern at all for, for trees. You're going to have big lighting, big commercial lighting, day and night? I don't know what your plan is. I don't know what the vision is for this neighborhood. I don't, most of these are, if not every one of those, is a single-family home on Divine Place. Everybody has a washer and dryer. And yes, indeed, occasionally those washers and dryers break down, and we have to make other arrangements, but usually temporarily. I don't know where the demand is. Is, are you going to bring new traffic? And where is the traffic going to park? On many an occasion, we find it very difficult to leave our street and go onto Sunrise Highway because of commercial traffic. So, those are the issues I ask you to look at. What are you planning here? What does this plan mean for the existing community? What is your vision for a future community? And I now see to others who've lived there, well, maybe not longer because they're younger. But thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
You mentioned commercial travel, things park, park there. I guess, trucks and different things parked on Divine Place?
Yes, right next to my house.
Where, where does that come from? Because I'm looking at this aerial, a picture here, and it seems like there's all residential homes there.
It looks like all residential homes. There is one plot that we did not buy between our house and a, a house recently, recently, last 10 years ago, I guess, acquired by a, a new neighbor for, who put up a fence. There weren't, there aren't many fences on Divine Place. Divine Place has been occupied as long as I've known it, and I believe there are people here who know it for the entirety of their lives and their parents' lives, as a very open place of families, often interrelated families. But someone came in and bought that property, and he has his landscaping trucks there. And that's improper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Come on up. Hold on, Matt, you may as well just wait a couple minutes, 30 seconds?
Yep.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Lau, please state your name and address for the record.
Sherez Floyd, 13 Divine Place.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I do. I'm across the street. And I'm actually directly in.
Hold on, Harold. The person addresses the board.
Sorry.
It's okay. Pay attention. Thank you.
So, my property is directly across the street from Ms. Smith's property. The land that she spoke about, I have called several times. I complain all the time. They told me he just gets a fine. I don't know. In reference to?
Matt, can we just make a note for the record about the issue of the commercial trucks being parked there illegally? Okay.
The last time I spoke to someone, I forgot which office it is, but his name is Chris. He explained to me that they couldn't even find an address. But based on the previous complaints, that he was able to pull it up. And that's how he was able to give me the information about the person. His name is Steve, I don't know his last name.
We're here to talk about this application.
So, that's, well, back to that, so?
Thank you for telling us about this, we will look into that.
So, piggybacking on what Ms. Smith said. I come out of my house, I go to work between 7:30 and 8 o'clock every morning. It's difficult for me to get off my street from the store on the corner, the traffic that they have every morning. So, to bring a laundromat that's not needed in our community when we have one on 110, we have two on 110, or several on 110. We have several Chinese places, one on the corner of Smith Street and 110. We don't need that in our area. We just starting to get our area back. We, for many a years, we had people hanging out and sleeping out on the corner. We don't have that anymore. We don't have loitering like that anymore. When we had stores, we had another store in the corner, next door to the corner store. People slept out there all night. They had lighting, it didn't work. I understand that they want to build, and that's fine. But in our community, we're family. I've lived on Divine Place, I'm 49 years old. I've never lived anyplace else. My mom is 69, she's never lived anyplace else. My aunt, I won't tell her age, she's never lived anyplace else. We have about, I think it's eight or nine houses on the block. Everybody, like she said, there's only one house with a real, well, two houses with a fence. They're new, newly acquired, well, one's 30. But still, my side, on my side of the street is my aunt, myself, and my mother, and then the next house. None of us have fences. None of us worry about crime. None of us have those problems now. At one time, we did, when we had other stores along that area. I don't see a need for it. I spoke to several people. They don't see a need for it. And it doesn't seem to service us. We don't, the things that they're going to put there, none of the people in that community are looking for.
Thank you. I just want to provide a little context. Our job as a planning board, and I appreciate everything that's been said, so I wanted to just say, our, our job as a planning board is to look very carefully at the site plan. And, and to make sure that issues, for example, one that was just raised regarding lighting and all of those things related to the development of, of the site are consistent with the town's code and more, and just as importantly, if not more importantly, what the impacts will be on the adjacent property owners, the people in the neighborhood. So, that's our job. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else would like to address the board? Thank you very much. Mr. Gebhardt, oh, you want to come up? Come on up. You don't have to fill that out now, you can do it later. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Wanda Jackson, 11 Divine Place.
11 Divine Place. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed, Ms. Jackson.
All of those situations that they said were all perfectly right. But I have a safety problem. Because they have, every store that they built, the General Dollar Store, the Smith Street Pink Stores, even the Dollar Tree down in the Village, they all have people loitering in front of them. Even some of them asking for money. And I think that this is not going to be a good place because it's right off the sunrise. When they had the, associated up on Great Neck Road, that development, it was all drugs. But everybody knew, if you don't do drugs, or you don't want to be involved with drugs, don't go there. And the people stayed right in that shopping center. The minute they tore the shopping center down, they were all over, from there all the way down to the sunrise. They were even coming in my yard. And my father asked me, "Man, what's, you know, what do you want? Can I help you?" And the man told him, "Go in the house and mind your business." And the other guy comes running up to the car selling them drugs. So, what's going to be the difference? Drugs are still around, not like maybe they used to be, but they're still around. And if they can do it at the sunrise, you know, they can, it's better for them. And then people, they're not going to know that it's really a dead end, Divine Place. They'll be coming up, turning around, trying to get through, and it's a schoolyard right there, which they don't need, you know, bad people coming. Because you don't know who's going to go to the laundromat. You don't know who's going to be going to the store, or hanging out, or whatever. So, I don't think it's really that great an idea.
Okay.
But every place else that they tried to put something, they're hanging out there. And then on the corner, they'll be making U-turns because it's a lot there, and they'll be turning in there like they do now. And they all parked. be turning in there like they do now, and they all park there to go down to the deli on the corner. And this is just adding more traffic, because they're putting apartments up, almost to Harrison Avenue, and those apartments, when they get full, they're gonna have traffic coming down, and four or five o'clock, you can't get off the street, because it's bumper to bumper. So that's gonna be traffic. Then they're gonna have this stores coming onto Albany too, and you might be able to squeeze in and get a turn to the sunrise, but you're not gonna make it to go up north. So I don't, I don't agree with this. And I have to look out for my safety, because right now, I can leave my door unlocked and not worry. But if people are coming there, and I don't know who they are and stuff, I'm gonna have to worry. And, you know, I'm there alone, I can't be worrying about stuff like that. So I just, I don't know, I just don't think it's a great idea. If they could put something there, but if it was something like where they, you buy something, you leave right away, but not where you can hang around. Because then, if they're at the laundry, what happens? They get tired of sitting there, and they want to take a little walk while they're waiting for the machine. Here they come up my street, I don't know if these are good or bad people, so they come up my street, they could be casing the house. When they had the drugs up there, one guy come up there, and I, he stood there in front of my house, I said, can I help you? You looking for somebody? So he says, go in the house and mind your business, or I burn your house down. I told him, well, you want to do that? Come and do it right now. But then, you know, I was younger, and I wasn't afraid of these people, but now, they pull guns and knives. Before, I used to spray them with the hose every time they went past my house.
It is a different world, sadly. Very, very sadly.
Because I'd take the car, they'd be going up to the schoolyard, I'd take my car and block it across the street, and I'd tell them the car broke, I can't back it up. And they'd start cussing and stuff, and then when they pulled off, back, back in the driveway.
Okay.
But I wasn't afraid of them then, you know? But I'm not the age I am now, so...
Yeah.
And they're not real sensible like they used to be.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Okay.
I'm just looking out for the danger part.
Thank you very much. You can fill that card out. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Just, come on up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Want to give Matt your card?
I need a card. Hold on, this one. Thank you.
Okay, you can fill that out, Ed. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Mandy Miller Jackson, 23 Edmunds Place, Copec, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Pumbasha Kisowee, aquae. Greetings.
Sorry, you gotta speak more directly into the microphone, I'm having a hard time here.
Pumbasha Kisowee, aquae. That means greetings.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions, and as you can see, the audience here is very familiar with the area, back to 18, 1700s, et cetera. And I understand, Mr. Lau, I'm a board, directing this to the board, do we know how much was paid for these three lots? And where in the process is this agreement moving forward? Is this, just a question, answer, to see what the community thinks? Or is this something that's already done, and the economic, environmental studies have been completed of the area, because we all know what's going on under the ground there? Or we should know? Does the community have access to the economic studies and the environmental studies that were completed in the area? That was one question. The other thing is, it's understandable when people pay substantial amounts for certain properties and geographic areas, and may not know the history of that area. Have any of the people who are involved in historic preservation been contacted in regard to this development? And because I'm coming to this meeting in support of my cousin, who, her father and my father were brothers, and because her house was relocated under eminent domain from New Highway, where Pathmark used to sit and Big Lot sits now, that used to be her father and her mother's entire property. And they were told to move and relocate to the family property on Divine Place, because her people and my people are divine. And that's where the house was built, for $27,000. There were other historical homesteads there. So the people here have a vested interest in what's taking place in that area, and we have been doing our very best to catch people up on the environmental piece to that, the historical piece to that, the importance of that area. It's not just another lot. It's not just another area, and I know that, and I'm sure that Mr. Lau has paid substantial dollars for that. But I would just like to know if those things had been done. The other thing is, there's an importance to that area, because economically, as Wanda said, the houses that are being constructed, the one-family houses that are being constructed on Harrison Avenue and Albany Avenue, and in other environs there, they may need someplace to wash their clothes, or they might want to eat Chinese food somewhere. But I am sure that there have been a lot of accidents at that site, of Albany Avenue and Sunrise Highway, and that area. There are also middle school children who cross Sunrise Highway from one side of Albany Avenue and go to the middle school at Sunrise Highway, and I know the fences have been put up, but that's where a lot of the children egress through that area to cut down Divine Place. Has anybody done a study of, you know, how many accidents have occurred there, at that location? Because there have been numerous ones, and I'm familiar with that, because I had two who are now adults that traversed that area. It was very dangerous. So when people stopped to go into the proposed shopping center, make that right into the facility, that's a concern that I have, as far as the traffic patterns are concerned. Sometimes you can't prevent economic development, but we can do it in a safe, and an informed, and knowledgeable way. And Patrick Halpin is very familiar to me, from when my mom, Evelyn Miller, used to be involved in a lot of the things back in the day.
Yes, she was.
Yes, so yes, I was drugged to a lot of the meetings, and it's so nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
And the rest of you as well. But...
And you too, Dan.
Yes, yes. So, but this is a serious issue.
It is.
And it's an important issue, and we are not being aggressive towards the current purchaser of these property, but we do need to be aware of some of the things and stand up, it's time for us to stand up and just acknowledge these things before, before construction takes place.
Dan?
Please. I have one question. You mentioned the path that students take when they walk. Could you just reiterate that? I misheard you.
All right. There are children who are on the south side of Sunrise Highway, and this is not to create a problem for them, but they are outside of the range for the school bus, and they attend Miles Middle School. So that the only way that they can cross, and I'm sure there's probably a crossing guard or two there somewhere, is at Sunrise Highway and Albany Avenue. And then they go across Sunrise, north, to Divine Place and make the left, and continue up the back way to the middle school. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, yeah. Mr. Kephart, you want to come up? So we addressed some of the questions that have been asked. Could you discuss the lighting on the, on the site, and the requirements for lighting to stay on that site?
Well, all the projects that I've worked on require lighting. None of the projects ever allow the lighting to go past the property to light. There's your lighting, right there, behind you. And that was done by Kenny Green from Magnum Flood. That's where all the numbers are. That shows the lighting at, on the site itself. Hardly any go past the property to light.
The access to, to the property is solely on Sunrise Highway, is that correct?
No. Access is on Sunrise Highway and Albany.
And Albany.
There are already, there, there are two curb cuts right now, two on Sunrise, and one on Albany, that we're modifying. We're reducing one on Sunrise, and we're modifying the one on Albany.
And that's going to be, that, those revisions are gonna be reviewed by the planning department?
They've been in planning.
Traffic safety and all that. Any of the other board members have questions? Dan?
I have a slew of questions. So first, was there, are you currently in talks with any potential tenants, or is this the anticipation of these type of uses?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Are, is your client in talks with any potential tenants, or is this just assumptions based on what they're building to?
I'm not sure, but I know, I know they are going to build the laundromat, and they intend to construct two other stores, and hope to get tenants.
Okay.
Which, which is quite common.
No, I get it. My next question, was there a traffic study done at this location, or was it required by the town?
Town requires us to hire an outside engineer. I think we worked with Cameron Engineering. I don't think Cameron, no, shouldn't say that. Cameron deemed it wasn't, a traffic study wasn't necessary.
Okay. If this board required you to do a traffic study based on the comments made by constituents who came here tonight, or the fact that students walk in that area, would your client be objecting to do that, if the board requires it?
Well, probably not, but that has nothing to do with little kids walking across Sunrise Highway.
Well, if they walk up to Divine Place, which is relatively close to the Albany Avenue access, and that's something that should be looked at, to ensure that if there's any additional developments that should be done, and the town requires, then that should be looked at, from our point of view, because it affects the community.
If that's what the town requires, I would think...
Okay.
...that we have to provide that.
Also, does your client operate, own and operate any other, I know they operate locations elsewhere in Suffolk County, mostly in Islip, but do they own those properties and operate them as well?
I don't have that answer.
Yeah.
Yes.
11th sentence. Okay. And then, do you currently have a policy for if someone is loitering on your property, that your employees of the laundromat, who basically are the landlords on site, what would they do, should they encounter an issue?
Okay, hold on. Mr. Lau, would you mind coming up? Mr. Kephart, or Mr. Lau, answer this question.
I've had that problem a couple times before.
Yeah.
And we solved it by putting additional lights on the back of a building in Islip. And we solved it also by putting the sprinklers on at a certain time. And that kind of subdued a lot of the loitering. But go ahead.
So at your other locations, what have you done to help prevent this, or eliminate it?
So besides the lighting and the other safety, you know, precautions, we also have a full-time employee that handles relations with the police at all our stores. So anytime there's people hanging around the Center 11, the employees there, our employees, they call Vincent Johnson and interact with the police, do the best we can.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kephart.
Thank you.
Matt, where are we with this review, my staff?
Revisions are currently in and under review by a number of departments, by staff personnel, and records.
September 18. So this record will stay open till September 18. And anyone that wants to make additional comments regarding the proposal, are free to do that until at least September 18. Okay, so we need a motion to extend the record. Motion by Juan?
Motion to extend the record.
Second by Ed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Okay. Thank you very much, that's the end of our board hearing.
Thank you so much.